Good afternoon and welcome to the four o'clock work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today, our work session is on my resource connection and the familiar faces initiative. Like all of our work sessions, these are for informational purposes only. We don't take any votes at our work session. If you have public, we also don't take any public comment. If you have any public comment or would like to provide that, we'd welcome you at our 5:30 business meeting, and you could provide those comments during the public comment portion. With that, I will turn it over to Bob Tryansky, who will kick off our work session. Bob?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, and good afternoon, everyone. This is Bob Tryansky, Director of Behavioral Health Projects for Douglas County. And this afternoon, what we'd like to do is two things. You know, throughout the time that we have spent bringing the crisis system components online, one of the questions that comes up often is, what are we doing about data? How are we tracking data? What metrics are we gathering? How are we sharing that information? These are big questions, and to be able to answer them competently requires a lot of complex work. And I think sometimes we lose sight of how much work has been done in this space over the last couple of years. So what we want to do is I want to reset the table and sort of start where we started with a tool, really at the beginning of doing this work, and share with you what my RC is, how we're using it, and perhaps most importantly, some changes that we've implemented over the last couple of years in collaboration with our partners in sort of being supported by our senior data analyst in Johnson County, and some real work by the admin team here at Douglas County with our partners to kind of broaden our sense of what we think is possible with my resource connection, which is a data sharing platform that is really intended to be able to take a look and see how our system is performing, see where people are touching the system, and then being able to say, can we use this powerful machine? Put it together with human beings who are providing services and coordinating care, and what type of results could we get for the most vulnerable people in our communities? People who really struggle and people who we created this ideal crisis system to serve better. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to talk to myself as I set that up, as I frequently do. Apologies to everybody, including the folks at home. I'm going to cross my fingers that this now will do what it did before we went online. It looks promising on this end. Okay, so the first thing I want to do is anchor this presentation with the Community Health Improvement Plan. It is Public Health Month, and we are excited to celebrate that. And in the behavioral health plank of the chip, there is a focus area around optimizing our behavioral health crisis response system. You all have seen this multiple times, but it's always helpful to have a frame. So we've got three goals within that space of the crisis response system. The first is to build an integrated system of care that moves from crisis and reactive intervention as a norm to recovery and prevention as a practice. We want to ensure that individuals in crisis receive the right care in the right setting at the right time. And in this iteration of the chip, this is a new goal. Increase utilization of 24/7 crisis services, increase mobile response frequency, and improve connection and engagement with pre-imposed crisis services and care pathways. Specifically under that, we have a couple of objectives and strategies related to what we're going to talk about this afternoon. The first is increasing the number of familiar faces referrals. You'll understand what that means a little bit later, once we can dive in and give you some examples of how we're doing this. Who consent to share information and engage in care coordination and treatment? We're striving to increase by 10% annually. The second strategy that we're focused on here is by 2025, we set a goal to integrate all of our behavioral health partners on my RC. Prior to this year, that was not something that had pleaded. Some of our partners were early adopters. We did a lot of work with all the covered entities, but we really only had two behavioral health entities that were sharing data on the my RC platform. As of two weeks ago, all of our partners have signed agreements to participate, and by the end of April, all of those agencies will have their first extract online. And we're very excited about that because it was, commissioners will remember, there's been a lot of work involved in that, and I think it really speaks to our partners' commitment to do things, even though they take a lot of work, and sometimes it's hard, and it takes longer than we expected. And the third strategy is that we want to operationalize and formalize a process to enhance care coordination and resource availability for familiar faces. So one thing I'm going to do this afternoon is explain a project, and the project, like many of the things we've done, is experimental in the sense that Police Chief Lockhart said, hey, would it be possible to pay more attention to our top 10 most active, most challenging individuals at any given time? Because it seems like the folks in the behavioral health space are doing a great job of doing that, but we often see people who are hitting the system, hitting our system multiple times, and there seems to be a gap here. So it's really that kind of question that our partners rose to the challenge, and our partners are here today. And so that's what we want to do today. I want to do introductions. I'm going to start all the way to my right with Brett.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brett Hartford. I am the Executive Director of the Homeless Resource Center.
Hi, everyone. I'm Matt Cravens. I do data for the county.
I'm Megan Point Dexter. I'm the Executive Director at the Senior Resource Center for Douglas County.
And Jill Joliker will also be joining online. And when she does, we'll give her an opportunity to say a few things. Is she in? Okay, great. Jill, do you want to say hello?
Yeah, I'm here. Jill Joliker, Assistant County Administrator. Thanks for having me.
So let's start by taking a look at what is my RC? How does it work, and how do we get to where we are? About 2017, I think it was, a group of our partners at that time who were really focused on the fact that our jail was not over full or at capacity. It was overflowing. And too many of the people that were in our jail had serious and persistent mental illness, and there were all kinds of complexities with that. We got invited to participate, we, meaning Douglas County, got invited to participate in something sponsored by NACO, the National Association of Counties, and the Council of State Governments Data Driven Justice Initiative. They pulled communities together, government elected officials, and said, what can we do to share data across the system so that we can have an impact on reaching the stepping up initiative goals of reducing our jail population with serious mental illness, reducing length of stay, and connecting people with care? That started in 2017. So several of us at the time went down to Washington DC. We spent several days together. And one of the things that grew out of that was watching a presentation from Johnson County about a data platform they had created called my resource connection. We kind of sort of knew about this platform, but what was interesting as they were presenting was to see the other communities in the room, because we had seen other data vendors and other software platforms, say, I really want to know more about that my resource connection because Johnson County was doing a really terrific job seeing where people touch the system. So let's start by explaining what my resource connection is. My resource connection is it's a, it's a public-facing and service provider-facing data platform. And it has two pieces to it. It has a front-facing piece that allows crisis counselors, case managers, probation officers, people who work with folks who need help to maximize their connections with community resources. So there's a front-facing webpage that people can find job opportunities, map out their transportation. There's a whole host of features that are available in the front-facing end of this platform. What's really powerful for us is there's also a back-facing part of the platform, and it's designed and intended to provide additional support and information for case managers and care coordinators and emergency room doctors or nurses to be able to see what has happened to an individual and where they are touching the system. So for example, if you are a case manager with the assertive community treatment team, and you have a client who winds up in the emergency room, when you look into my RC, you'll be able to see that that person has been to the emergency room six times in the last three months. They've been to jail twice in the last two years. They have a case manager at Heartland and a case manager at Burt Nash and a case manager at DECA. And the machine, the platform, does a nice job of finding those common mutual client pieces and connecting people with that. Jill, do you have anything you want to add here at this point about the two pieces of the, of the my RC platform or Dr. Cravens?
Bob, I would just say, I think what's important is, and we talk about that in some of the background documents, is that it is all of the folks that have access to viewing that data that Bob was detailing are users with unique user credentials, and those credentials are all based on where they work. And that's outlined in a lot of the backup materials, and there might be questions about that. But just that might, you know, for folks that might just be hearing this presentation and information about this program for the first time, we have a lot of, a very strong framework for privacy protection and adherence to the law.
And I'll add that all users go through training and intensive training before they can use it.
You're talking about the backend users or the public users?
The backend. Okay. Yeah. So some other things to know about my resource connection. Anybody who's on my resource connection has signed a release to be on my resource connection. So they sign a release of information as part of connecting with services. And then Matt talked about, there's extensive training. There's also an auditing function. And so folks in Johnson County and Douglas County and our partners can, there's, there's serious ability to audit how users are looking at things and what they're looking and what they're looking at. So there's those two pieces of the, of the platform. And, yes.
Do patients have to consent?
Yes.
What does that process look like?
It's part of the release that they would sign. So it is embedded in the LMH Emergency Department release. And one of the things we've been working on is to try to get to a point where our partners, who are 42 CFR Part II covered entities, can also do the same type of thing. And that is one space where there's been a lot of progress made because some of the limitations and provisions of 42 CFR have changed in the last year to a year and a half.
One other question is, are version connected to the Johnson County version? So that we can see people using services from both counties?
And the answer to that question is, it depends, right? And the answer to most questions here are, it depends on what the privacy level of access is and what the connection might be. I don't think there's a lot of, and Dr. Cravens could probably talk about this from a logistics and piece, but I don't think there's a lot of Johnson County, Douglas County information sharing.
That's correct, Bob. There's not a lot, but there are a couple of services that you can see across the county line, like jail. So we can see the Johnson County jail bookings.
And also to understand kind of the structure of my RC, people have access based on partitions that have kind of a hierarchy. So a police officer could see where, that's not the right example. A probation officer can see mutual clients in criminal justice services. They can't see that a person is receiving services at Burt Nash. But Burt Nash can see that that client has a probation officer because Burt Nash can look down. People can only look up to the level of their, of their access and clearances. And at the top of this, what's exciting now is we now have a partition at the top where the 42 CFR covered, Part II covered entities can see down through the whole system, but nobody can see, can see up into their partition. And we really have to thank DECA for, when we started this, having the courage to jump online and say, hey, we will be willing to be at the top of this to see how this works, and if people can have confidence that we could get to a point where folks could share. Now, the 42 CFR covered entities will be able to see mutual clients with each other at the top of that platform. And that is, that has the potential to be a real game changer in lots of ways.
Bob, 42 CFR?
Yes. It is a set of requirements that the federal government puts into place that severely limit how much information and protects privacy for people who are receiving substance use services. Trying to put it in layman's terms because I don't fully understand all the technical pieces of it. Did I do that right? Jill, did I miss anything on 42 CFR Part II?
No, you didn't, Bob, but I, you know, part of the process that we threw, that Bob talked about this past year of going, reviewing the new rules, was we worked very closely with legal counsel expertise to make sure that everything that we, we, we closely compliance with the different partner agencies as well.
We've spent six years wrangling through all of these little kerfluffle of details, and that's why we've made a lot of progress. And it's interesting to be at a point now where if you look back, you can say, wow, this is dramatically different from where it was five, six years ago.
So Bob, those privacy tiers, you've got substance use kind of at the top of that, that they have access to other people's data, but their data is not widely shared. And then probably healthcare data, and then other services like Just Foods and that sort of thing?
Those, Just Food is not, so human service agencies are not on the platform at this point.
Okay.
But we are trying to get to a point, like here's a benefit of multidisciplinary, multi-agency collaboration on something like the homeless response team. If there's a Mirror Inc. employee on that team, well, then that team has access through that employee to be able to see where somebody is. Now, I don't mean the whole team can access that, but there's a person on the team who can see where the person is touching the system or where that person is getting other services. And that makes for the team to be able to be more efficient and more effective. Does that help? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cravens because, so we started this in 2017. We made a lot of progress. Then COVID happened, and let's just say this wasn't our number one priority. And so really about two years ago, we tried to knock the mothballs out of this project because usage had declined, the number of people who had been trained had declined. There was, it just kind of went dormant. And we turned as a team with Dr. Cravens and with Steve Yoder at Johnson County and with Heartland Radac to say, what would it take to reinvigorate this? And to increase buy-in from partners that are maybe resistant to participate? How can we make sure that the people who are trained are actually utilizing it? So what could we do to kind of increase utilization, increase the number of trained users, and increase buy-in for use of the platform? I'm going to turn it to you, Matt.
Unfortunately, we have seen a lot of increase in the usage the last few years. So this first figure here will show the total aggregate days used by all users across all organizations, starting in 2021 up to 2024. So we saw about a 63% increase in usage over this time, which is pretty significant. The biggest organization is Burt Nash. So Burt Nash's usage increased 106% from 826 days in 2021 to about 1,724. What was nice is we saw a couple of organizations that hadn't used it at all in 2021 that really increased quite a bit. So Heartland Radac is there in, I believe that's purple, I'm colorblind, but I think that the purplish color there in the middle, it went from about zero days used in 2021 to 431 in the last year. So this is a result of a lot of efforts by county staff, Bob and I, working with their leadership to get their care coordinators to sort of incorporate into their daily work routine. And they found it to be a really useful tool, and that's why you see that increase in usage.
And we knew that we wanted Heartland Radac's care coordination team to make more use and more frequent use of my RC. So we really focused there because it's a small team. It's six care coordinators. And it gave us the opportunity to sort of set some, just some test benchmarks and metrics to see what does it take to bring a team up to speed so that they're actually really using it? And then how do we scale that? So we really spent a year working with the Heartland Radac team and got these types of results and then said, and were able to point to Heartland Radac's progress and say, look, Heartland Radac's piece of the journey here is also proof of concept that this is worth, that this is worth the work.
And another organization would be JAA. So J-Hawk Area Agency on Aging went from zero to, let's see, that other dark blue.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, 291. So that team is basically headed up by Jeannie First doing project lively work, and her team has just used it considerably and found it to be very useful. So it's particularly useful for them because they do home visits too. So they like to know who it is they're going to be visiting, and if that person has had any sort of background that might be concerning. So the second figure shows my RC users with 25-plus hits per year. So a hit is any click on a client or research record, once you're logged into my RC. So everyone logs in with a password and username. And these are what I would call sort of regular users, and we see a real, pretty big increase in usage over this time. So 48 regular users in 2021, up to about 123 in 2023, and then down a little bit in 2024. But I think one thing to note is Burt Nash really saw a big increase. So Burt Nash users have used this a lot. We've seen a lot of crisis care components coming online. Some of those new staff members have started using it quite a bit. But then what's nice to see is Burt Nash increased their usage even through a change in their electronic health record system. So they got a new EHR. Unfortunately, their data in my RC became stale for a couple of years. But even despite that, their staff continued to see it as a very useful tool, and they were able to look up their clients on other service records as well. So I think one thing I'll quickly say about this increase in usage is our trainings have all been done in Douglas County now. So we used to have Johnson County do it. This enables us to do more quick trainings and just, you know, get more people through the system and get more people access.
Matt's also spent some time as part of that training, building in some exercises and activities, and then bringing folks who are kind of fans of my RC, like Jeannie First from, from JAA in during the training, just to talk about, this is how I use it, this is what I've learned, here's something I didn't even think I could do with it, that I could do. And I'm always struck by how Jeannie is able to speak to, you know, this is helpful as a provider to feel more comfortable about safety, whether I could, should feel comfortable meeting somebody at their home or whether I should meet in a coffee house because I see the variety of ways in which a person has had interaction with the system or things that have happened in the, in the community. So the trainings are different. The trainings have moved.
So Matt, you said that a, a hit, right, is a click, right? So when someone's using the system and they click on a particular, so they're searching for a resource, right, to refer somebody? And then they click on the resource, let's say the resource is transportation. Is that what would constitute a hit?
It can be the front-facing side that has the resources, but it can also be the client records on the backend too. So a click could just be looking at John Doe's LDCFM or ambulance runs, and that would be a click too.
Okay, so then a hit is not necessarily a patient referral. It's not actually referring the patient out to a particular resource?
No, I probably should have just used the term clicks. It's essentially a click.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. Do we have slides that show referrals to specific?
I'm glad you raised this question because I think that's really important. This is not a referral platform. This platform does not manage referrals. It does not close referral loops. It is not that solution that the community is also searching for and has been for a number of years. This is a window into a person's interaction with the system that allows us to be able to better understand. When I say at the training now, which I didn't say three, four years ago, I've come to realize that this is a tool to actually deliver trauma-informed care because of, instead of having interaction with the person and saying, what's wrong with this person? And what's going on? You can use my RC to get up to speed on what happened with this person and to be able to sort of see the full picture in a trauma-informed way instead of a urgent care problem-solving way. So it's a window for the care provider to be able to be more thoughtfully and trauma-informed about what's happened with this person.
And so then, once that click is, once the resource is clicked, right, and you're having the conversation with the individual, then is the individual encouraged to engage with the resource?
On the front end?
On the front end.
Front-facing end?
Correct.
I would say yes, and that would be a great question to ask Jeannie so she could explain how. We're really focusing this afternoon more on what you can see on the backend and how we're using, using that. But there's a, we could do a whole presentation on how my RC can help a case manager to find job opportunities within a three-block radius of where a person is looking for jobs and where they live, and then mapping out transportation of how to get to A to B. That's what the tool can do for that case manager. We don't track a lot of that, but I think Johnson County does in terms of just making some sense-making about utilization of that part of the platform.
Okay, but it's more than just job opportunities too?
Yes.
Yes.
Job opportunities, food pantries.
Correct.
It's all there. And it's, it's all been built on two-on-one. Information in that infrastructure is what we've, Jill, and was really successful at getting United Way to pull that in.
Okay, so, but then when you do initiate the click, either way, we're not necessarily tracking if the individual has, we're not closing the loop.
Correct.
So we're not really understanding if the individual has actually engaged with the particular resource.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a feeling I know what Jill was going to say. My RC is a very adaptable platform, and so it can change. We can add things to it. And I think one thing that Jill was maybe going to mention is that we have built in a community outreach referral form system into my RC. It's not the main purpose of my RC by any means, but it's been a really useful platform for emergency providers to submit referrals on people who are familiar faces. And that actually does get processed into my RC, and the data is very accessible that way too.
That's that merging the machine and the person together.
Go ahead, Jill.
And I did want to say, Commissioner Anderson, so those hits, what they also represent is that when a case manager gets a notification in their inbox in the morning, which, which more often than not they do, that notification, they click on the link and that logs them, they log into my RC, that counts as a, as a hit, so to speak. And that demonstrates that that case manager, with that notification, they are, they're seeing something about their client, that something's happened with their client. Their client was visited by LDCFM, their client is booked in the jail. Their client has a new mutual connection with, with DECA or another service partner. And with that information, that they're taking action to coordinate care and possibly intervene in what might be an escalating situation. So the hit is proof to us that the users are taking action on information that they receive via my RC. It's an imperfect system when we talk about referrals. That's a whole other conversation. But what Matt was talking about in terms of the referral form, that's, we could have a whole other conversation about that, and I think we'll touch on that here in the conversation later. But I just want to make sure that's also what those hits represent. It represents that the case managers are getting new information about their client, and the hope is that they take that information and they intervene in some skillful way to support their client or coordinate their care.
Thank you. So I think what I'm hearing is that it also initiates a my RC intake almost with the individual that actually receives that email. And so then they, right, they have action. They initiate.
Ideally, yes. A person can receive a client alert from my RC and not act on that. So there's no assumption that, and some of our partners, and those practices are changing and evolving, said at the outset, we would like client alerts to come to this supervisor to channel things out and direct things. Others are getting the client alert themselves. Okay, so it's also a tool that we've allowed our, we've allowed our partners to use based on what they need and how they need to use it. So it's a process that's evolving. Jill, do you want to explain a little bit about the, my, the mutual client alert? I don't think we made that clear here.
It's just when, say I'm a client at Burt Nash, I, whoever my case manager is, if I happen to have a jail booking tonight, my case manager is going to get a notification that they have a mutual client at the Douglas County Jail. They, Douglas County Jail. And again, with that information, that's an alert that comes through every single night when my RC refreshes itself. If a new, if a new incident has happened in the last 24 hours, it refreshes itself and it produces an alert in the inbox of the case manager that's connected to that client based on the EMR. Yeah, we could go down lots of rabbit holes, and between Matt and I, we could spend a good chunk of time maybe doing some one-on-ones with anyone that wants to learn a little bit more about how it works, or maybe even go through a training, Commissioner Anderson, because Matt does a really great job of breaking it all down to, to new users.
I had a question. The, how do you define Douglas County admin in the use? And could that be you training people and so forth?
Yeah, exactly. So Douglas County admin in this category just is, is me, Jill, Bob, IT, and anyone related to sort of administration of the program.
But Matt's the super-utilizer in, in his role. Commissioner Reed, did you have something? Okay, so let's talk, let's turn to look at how we're taking this tool and trying to apply it experimentally through a project to try to get better outcomes for people. So the Familiar Faces Initiative is a project that we started about eighteen months ago at the, again, really at the ask of Chief Lockhart, to see if we could bring those law enforcement referrals and calls together with this capacity and do some problem-solving and sense-making with and for officers who don't have the ability to look up, and they're just on the scene, and they're probably at some point gonna peel off the scene. But how do we make sure that we don't leave somebody behind who then just continues to fall through the cracks? That's actually a very difficult challenge to, to try. And our partner said, challenge accepted. I just want you to know that this Familiar Faces Initiative, it falls into this structure that's evolving on the Crisis Response Coalition under the CIT Council. So Familiar Faces is one of four work groups. We have Familiar Faces Work Group right now. We have a CIT Training Professional Development Work Group. We have an Alternative 911 Emergency Response Work Group. You'll hear from them later on the agenda this, this evening, and then the Stepping Up Initiative. So we've put those four bodies of work in here. Just, I'm just, you have this, and I don't need to read this, but I just wanted to share again that the Familiar Faces Project in Douglas County is part of a larger effort by communities around the country to address this challenge in ways that work within communities. And Commissioner Reed and I have participated in this learning community for, for several years, and I wanted to give Commissioner Reed a minute or two to just talk about that collaboration nationally and what we've been able to learn and share.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I, it's kind of, it's interesting to reflect back on how we got to this point. And I know I sort of entered into the space halfway through at this point, as far as we've come. But the, the NACO initiative initially was in 2021. National Association of Counties had reached out and encouraged us to apply to participate in a peer learning opportunity so that county-elected officials and county staff, some in roles like Bob's, some in like a criminal justice coordinator role, you know, sort of a little bit multidisciplinary in that way, went on a series of site visits to communities who were sort of at different stages of having really worked towards this idea that mental health, crisis intervention providers, emergency services, you know, both including our EMS and the emergency room and clinics such as Heartland in our community, and the jail and law enforcement were, had some way of talking to each other and had some sort of formalized way of communication. And that looks different in every community is really what the, the big takeaway was, right? But that was really helpful, I think, for Bob and I to see how, based on either just sort of the different ingredients that different communities have, so to speak, and different controlling statutes, depending on what state they're in, right, and structures to their own. You know, for us, it's KADAD's, you know, Department of Aging and Disability Services. There's other examples of that. So it, it was really just, I think, over the course of two years, we went to four different communities. One of the community site visits was actually to Douglas County and Johnson County, sort of as a joint visit, where we really highlighted MRC. And that was right at the time that we were opening the Treatment and Recovery Center and Beginning Services there. So I, I'd say, you know, the primary takeaways, Bob has sort of hit on them, that I found really valuable from the peer conversations was figuring out how to think about the, our role as a governing body and funders in a community and conveners, how to increase the buy-in and the understanding of how a tool like MRC and then Familiar Faces Initiative, which Bob is gonna describe a little bit more, but is essentially thinking about, you know, the, the people that almost every emergency or crisis intervention service in a community knows and may sees regularly in one way or another. But that previously, we may not always be sharing that information with each other, right? And that's been part of the problem, and it allows these gaps to get bigger and bigger for folks to fall through. But trying to really think about how do we help the, the agency users and the providers see that there's a mutual benefit there, that it's both for the benefit of the community member who's in crisis, that we are trying to stop failing as a system? And also, how is it beneficial to them in the work that they do and the capacity that they have and the, and the goals that they're trying to support folks in moving towards? And then also, our, our role, you know, that was sort of the power of convening conversations that I think local governments can play really effectively. And then also the service agreements tied to our funding partnerships, right? And that we've had a lot of conversations on this county commission over the last few years about the changes to service agreements and thinking about how to incorporate the expectation around use of MRC as a tool that really does allow coordination. And then another thing I remember really sticking out to me was that, obviously, privacy is sort of the, it's the core concern that everybody has. It's what everybody's questions are sort of generated out of and, and worries about how to really participate in information sharing system-wide. But I think that, that was informative for us to think about how, in the sort of re-up of trainings for users that Dr. Cravens and Bob have talked about, how to think about, what do we, what does informed consent mean? How do we talk about that with the person that we are asking to sign a release so that we can use this tool, so that it may be helpful to them the next time that an ambulance needs to be called, or they do get booked into the jail, or they find themselves in the emergency room, et cetera, et cetera? That some context and history is really, really helpful and can go a long way in supporting somebody with the needs that have previously been unmet. And so I think that's really what the core takeaway was.
And I think some other things that this did was, you know, there's something about being in a community that's a hundred times our size. And you see what their data platform is and what it costs and what they're able to do with it. And it's real easy to go, well, we could never do that. We could never afford that, because that's true. But when you can connect with those folks and they know what you're trying to do, they could say, well, you could do this. And, and we got a lot of, well, you could do this, you know? Or to, you know, to, to talk about being frustrated that maybe our partners hadn't bought into the idea that they should want to participate in this, you know, through technical assistance calls, having folks from one center or another, the Bazlon Center, said, well, you should build into your contracts that they have to do that. And that's what we did, and people didn't like it, but here we are, you know? And so that, I think it's that, it's that sort of, that multi, I mean, one thing we've been trying to do is how do we have one release of information that everybody uses for this purpose? So we can put that in the hands of, so we can put that in Brett's hands at Homeless Resource Center, so he could get a client to sign that, and then we can continue to support this person. Well, that happened in Orange County because of the relationships where I said, we just can't make this work. And Lily said, well, yes, you could. Here's the language you should use. I mean, that language from their contract is the thing on our fifth visit on one of these trips that put a light bulb. And we took, we took one of our CEOs with us and sat in the room watching how these communities are doing things. And I think a light bulb went off there and said, oh, I get it. I get it now. Also, language, you know, when we started doing this work, this is really important, I think. This type of initiative was called frequent flyers. This type of initiative was called loyalty customers. And then people would try to soften that with things like MVPs, Multi-Vision Visit Patients. Just the adoption of the idea of familiar faces and coming at this from the standpoint of, these aren't people who are a pain in the neck. These are people who have been consistently failed by the system for predictable, identifiable reasons. They're not treatment-resistant and system-resistant. They are system and treatment failed. And if we see them as the people that they are with the needs that they have, then that can allow us to have a different spirit and mindset and philosophy about why we do this work and how we do this work and how we hang in to do this work, because it is so important. One statistic that I like to share with people is, you know, like about a hundred and, we have like a hundred and twenty-two people a year who are familiar faces. A hundred and twenty-two. We have a hundred and twenty-two thousand people who lived here. During COVID, we all worked together to figure out ways to take care of those hundred and twenty-two thousand people. A hundred and twenty-two people generate seven hundred visits to our emergency department a year. If we could just do a better job with those hundred and twenty-two people, you know, about a hundred and sixty people are chronically homeless. This is not a big group of people. If we get to know them, if we really understand why they're resistant, what's happened to them, who can build trust and rapport, and why has one connection or another fallen apart, then we can really make progress. And we're, I believe we're seeing that in just the eight to ten cases where we've really had some wins this year. So just real quickly, I'm gonna walk you through this process.
A couple of clarification questions. So in terms of like the familiar faces being only a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty people, but that's not the only folks that are using, that are clients within MRC.
Correct.
That's a small subset of the folks that are being served by this platform. That was the first question.
Absolutely. Yeah, people are using MRC for varieties of reasons every day of the week.
And the second question was, in terms of some of the partners that were, you know, initially resistant to, to, to participating in, in MRC, what were some of the barriers? And are they finding that the system has usefulness that is worth having overcome those barriers?
I'll have to get back to you after April thirtieth, when they're all really up at the top of the partition. But what I would say is, here's the biggest one from my perspective, EHRs. All of our partners have changed EHRs, changed electronic health record, electronic medical record. And every one of those transitions is hard, time-consuming, more expensive than anybody thought, and unbelievably time-consuming. So we, Douglas County, have said, oh, well, while you're doing that, we'd also like to make sure that you can integrate onto this platform and do this other, other thing. So that's just kind of been one of the real barriers. And it, and it is, I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge. But in the absence of that, we don't see TRC visits, which are now very significant to, to, to see, because we need to see how is the TRC reducing the, the emergency room visits? So this was, these were barriers that were worth working through, and this is resistance that we should not roll over and play dead when we continue to bump into it, because it's inevitable that we will. Is that, okay? So I want to talk about, first, the partners. And there's some of the usual suspects, but it's interesting how Douglas County and the City of Lawrence are collaborating now through the CIT Council. It's interesting that Chief Patrick is co-facilitating, co-chairing, Chief Patrick from Baldwin, the CIT Council with Ryan Storch, the Director of Crisis Services for Burt Nash, who you 'll hear from later on. The Homeless Response Team and Project with Misty Bosch-Hastings is the Director of the Homeless Solutions Division. The players are changing, and the relationships are changing. And what's interesting is we're, I think we're still having success at pulling new configurations of partners together and trying to figure out how we can maximize those relationships. So city, county, through the CIT Council, Burt Nash, Heartland Community Health Center, the role of the community health worker at Heartland has been a game-changer in this work. The Sheriff's Department, Lawrence PD, LDCFM, and the Mobile Integrated Health Unit has been transformative in this work. LMH has consistently been probably our most sophisticated data provider, and they've been able to model what is possible within an agency. If you look at the TRC dashboard, that's really the result of LMH submitting and sharing their emergency department dashboard for four or five years. It gave us a, you know, a place to start. And Heartland RADAC, as we said, and, and TRC. So the way this works is, first thing is, there's a referral criteria. We said to those partners, what does a familiar face look like to you? Because it's different. So if you're at the Treatment and Recovery Center, they mean somebody who's come in three or more times in a month. That's a familiar face. If you're talking to the Mobile Response Team, it's three or more referrals in thirty days. If it's Lawrence Police Department, it's ten or more calls for service within a ten-day period. We asked all of our partners to define what does a familiar face mean, look like? What are some of the pieces of complexity that you see? What are some of the barriers that they see? Tell, talk to us about risk intensity. And we did this with the Assertive Community Treatment Team, the Emergency Department, and the Mobile Integrated Health Team. So the first thing was establishing that criteria. Then we had to design, and here's where we are at this point, with workflow. First thing is, somebody says, I have a person that seems to not be having an awesome time trying to navigate our system or even get through their day, and they seem to have crossed a threshold of risk that we should be concerned about. So the familiar face partners refer individuals with complex needs, high utilization of services, and increased or escalating risk. So all of the partners can do a familiar face referral. But it's not just limited to those partners, because the Homeless Resource Center, Brett and his team, see people all the time that we're not seeing. And we're not seeing because they're going to the Homeless Resource Center, because that's where they feel safe, and that's where they know people who can help them, and that's where they're, they're going back. Or they're showing up in the office at the Senior Resource Center. So, yeah. Thank you. So any of our partners can send a referral into this process. And what happens is, this, here's a referral. We've, we've gotten it to the point now where there's an online referral form. So this is a form that was utilized by one of the case managers at J AAA. And so like, here's the story. We've redacted. This person can't seem to complete most tasks that are more than one step at a time. If extreme paranoia, they consider any type of assistance as an incorrect assessment of her situation. She's in the process of being evicted due to non-payment of rent. She currently has case management through APS and the Hot Team and Burt Nash. Burt Nash has attempted case management, but she's resistant. This is a complex person who was showing up in the office of Senior Resource Center in the lobby every day and being very disruptive. And, you know, there's only so much the Senior Resource Center can do. So this is an example of, this is not something that one case manager or one agency can solve. It's much more complicated than that. And we can't even talk about how we're gonna solve it if we can't get people together to be able to huddle. So the referral comes in, and that's one example of a referral. I'm gonna scroll through the second one, because Brett will talk to us a little bit about that. Then the second thing is, the referral comes in, and now Dr. Cravens does a MRC crosswalk. So he takes this person, and he says, what does MRC show us about this person? And he compiles then kind of a presentation of, here is where this person is touching the system, so that we can redact their name and pull people together and basically say, does this case merit sort of intense collaboration and trying to work on things? If the answer is yes, we'll take it to the next step. If it's no, then Dr. Cravens refers this person to Heartland RADAC for intensive care coordination.
On your example, I think the person said no to being referred. So what you just described is after they've said no, but you're still gonna try and help them through collaboration with others?
So that's a great question, Jean. What happens then, or I think we're starting to do this, is we go, well, okay, so this group can't proceed in this way, the way we think we could be helpful. But what we could do is, we could deploy a peer-first person to see if, as a peer-support specialist, they could engage the person, build rapport, get to know them, and get to a point where if you ask, if they ask the person, do you want some help? They could say yes, and then we can give them a form and sign the release, and we're off to the, we're off to the races. So it's, that, that is really one of the most challenging elements of being able to do this work. So.
So Bob, where is the referral tracked?
Well, right now, the familiar faces process works a little bit like Fight Club. So rule number one, right, is you don't talk about familiar faces. And rule number two is, we don't talk about familiar faces. So I think we'll get to a point where the cases will be tracked, but we are not at a place yet where we're ready to bank that. We're just happy about that, the fact that our partners are coming to the table and we're figuring out what it takes. we're figuring out what it takes to make progress on this, and we're not violating any privacy limitations. So it's very much still an experiment in the works. And every case that we've worked on, you know, has elements where we're like, oh, this is really the issue. Guardianship, this is really the issue. Traumatic brain injury, not a serious mental illness. And, and the process is, I think we're starting to learn together, but we do need to, that's that last bullet point on the slide, right? Formalize the process so that we can scale it, once we figure out what works.
So do we know, so then the referrals come in, they come into?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so, but since we're not necessarily tracking the referrals, do we at least know, like by, at the end of every quarter, or by the end of the year, how many referrals have actually come into your system or into your, like, inbox? And are we tracking by, like, any sort of particular severity or clinical outcome? Or no?
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think what you'll see is, I think that Matt and Steve and some of our IT folks have figured out a way to get to the point where we are going to be able to track, because we're doing some things to create a recurring refreshed list of the top 25, which then allows us to, in the backend, know who they are while we're trying to say, let's talk about this person without talking about this person.
Okay. Or maybe, or track by, like, service, service provider?
Well, the nice thing is, it's a very small group of people, actually, that if you get all five of those agencies in the room, I guess they can stay, stay with that person because we're so small.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So the familiar face partners convene and review, and we, you know, try to determine if this is something that could be solved with clinicians and case managers and agency partners, or there are other complexities. Does the, do justice system partners need to be involved or be involved in a piece of the conversation? So the partner reviews get pulled together based on what's going on with the case and what we know and who we know, and whether or not we can make any progress at all. And then we convene a familiar faces huddle. I'll give you an example of a huddle that, that happened. There's a mom-to-be in the community, living in their car. They're well-known to people in the community, but they want nothing to do to engage with anybody. They're going to have a baby. They've had four babies. The baby's going to need to be born cesarean. So it's going to be very important that when mom starts to have this baby, that the team in our system is ready, or mom could die and the baby could die. So we convened a familiar faces huddle at Public Health. LMH participated, our peers participated, several agencies in the community who support moms in various stages of recovery and with challenges were also in the room. And without naming this person, we talked about, here's a person, there's a person in the community, this is going on. And one of the things that happened is that one of the peers at the recovery home said, I think I know this person, I might be able to talk with them. And what happened through a lot of engagement and collaboration is that that person started meeting with the peer at the library, and they were able to get them to go to their OB-GYN appointment. That peer met with them when they showed up at the emergency department, and they were able to calm them down, even when they decided to leave the emergency department. Long and short, baby was born, mom was okay, baby was okay. That's a win. That process looked totally different from a case involving a person who came to the TRC with a traumatic brain injury, who had been dropped off here and wound up spending 153 days in the TRC because they needed access to an adult residential care nursing home. They needed a guardian, they needed a whole bunch of stuff that the state of Kansas is not really good at delivering quickly. But the TRC staff said, if K-Dads is okay with this, and we can figure out, it's not awesome, it's not optimal, but if we leave this person out on the street, they're going to die. And that whole TRC staff rallied around that person, and they now are at a residential nursing facility. But that took 153 days of work. We now have a tool to do that, like, that's a win. Brett, you want to share, like, maybe one of your stories too? Because I think this, this one was a great example of collaboration between Homeless Resource Center, Heartland Community Health Center, and this process.
Absolutely. So we had a guest who was a very familiar face, going through lots of different traumas, was causing conflict with standing in the middle of traffic in front of our building. And I kept on saying, I'm going to have to remove services because of the, what it, what is causing to our neighbors, the, the conflict that it's causing. I said, the only way not would be is if you would take care of your mental health, if you'd go to the TRC, if you'd do something, like, we can, we can keep services. And eventually, it came to head that this person identified that they didn't need a mental health person, they needed a dentist, that their teeth were hurting so bad that it was causing everything else to happen. And so I said, well, can we work with you to get you to a dentist? Because I'm concerned that, seeing your behavior currently, you're not going to be able to get to the dentist and sit in the dentist's chair and receive the treatment, because everything else is so manic. And so that's when I went to the familiar faces referral, and I said, here's the situation, we have this individual, and I went through all of that. And that's where Heartland stepped in, and they said, well, let's, if we can get this individual to our building, we can give them a tour of the entire facility, we can help them feel comfortable with the environment that they're going to be in, then we can talk to them about scheduling a dentist's appointment. And so I transported them to Heartland, got the tour, saw where he's going to be sitting down, felt, met with the actual doctor who would be performing the procedure, got comfortable, and then was able to get them into that appointment, get the teeth taken care of, and get them re-engaged back into the community in a positive way. And so that person had previously been barred from services or exited from services from the shelter, and they've restored that since then, and they're working towards other things. But it wasn't easy. Again, that took, there was 55 emails that went back and forth in order to collaborate and make sure that everyone's on the same page, and everything was signed off on, and everybody was taking care of this individual, because throughout that entire process, they were still outside. They couldn't be at the shelter, and we only have one shelter, and if you're not there, then you're nowhere. And so we had to pinpoint and find this person. But because of this process, we were able to get the person the help that they needed.
Our largest consumer of days at the jail was referred to this process, and there was, there's pretty significant high-level huddle around this individual, because they have so many challenges and because they're such a high utilizer of services in the criminal justice system. I don't know exactly what all the factors were, but what I know is, they did not return to jail for seven months. That's a major win. They are back in the jail, but they were not in the jail for seven months. It's the longest period of time they've not been in the jail in the last six, seven years. The case that we pulled up first and redacted, this is, we, we huddled around that individual. There was a lot of frustration at that point. Megan, I don't know if you want to, yeah, talk about the process.
In my more or less 25 years of working with at-risk individuals, this is the most difficult person that I've encountered. And it really came, as Bob said, she was coming to the lobby of the Senior Resource Center on a regular basis, but beyond that, she was calling the Senior Resource Center staff and going through, like, the triage of our phone system, and each of us were getting three, five, 10 phone calls a day, and that's every single staff person. And when it kind of came to light that it's not just me getting all those calls from her, it's every person on the staff, and I kind of had that aha moment of, if that's just happening at the Senior Resource Center, it's happening all over town, and we are being triangulated. And if you're not familiar with the concept of triangulation, it's kind of when, you know, you're playing mom against dad, if you will. And so she had been referred to Project Lively from the Senior Resource Center. Jeanne and I worked together extensively and continued to struggle, and that's when she and I said, how about that brand-new familiar faces thing? Let's give that a shot. And we reached out to Bob. And it really came down to the fact that the Senior Resource Center, you did not see our name on that partner list. And we are a little, you know, we're not currently qualified to have access into that system. And the familiar faces helped us share with all of the people who are in my RC and who were also working with all the things that my staff had been doing for her, which was a lot, but they had no idea. And so there's a lot to that story that there is not time for.
Yeah.
So we'll leave it at that.
But real quickly, that individual finally wound up at the TRC, and again, at a point where they could have been discharged to street homelessness, because they were evicted and all these pieces happened. Now collaboration with the Director of Homeless Solutions Division, and the Director of Crisis Services, Burt Nash, and conversation with me, and Dr. Houston, and Bree Harmon-Moore, Clinical Director at TRC. We collaborated over the course of several days, because the worst thing that could happen next would be for that person to walk out of the TRC, until they were able to have them leave the TRC and go to Monarch Village, where they eventually left. But keeping them from having a street homelessness discharge from the TRC, that's a win. So we've seen, I would say, eight to 10 significant wins, like I'm describing, through this process. So the process has merit, and we have proof of concept that doing this work in this way is worth the investment of time and energy. It's also, we need to figure out how to make it sustainable, we need to figure out how to make it efficient, we need to figure out how to communicate out to our partners, so that it's not just Senior Resource Center and HRC that has access to this. But that's going to take, that's going to take some time. What's really cool is, we'll just end with this, I'm going to jump, because Matt has done some significant work to use kind of the algorithm and automation features of this project to take and surface and say, who are our top 25 familiar faces at this point? And if we connected those individuals with cost estimates of what a, sorry, keep forgetting about the bullet points. So what you'll see is, this actually allows us, this is what this says, I'll summarize it. These top 25 individuals in a 60-day period consumed $341,000 worth of services. That, that number is vastly underestimated, because we, we pick numbers as placeholders. So this gives us an opportunity, though, to say, well, what are those costs per bed day, and how do you apply that and spread and take a look at the total cost of, of this, this service? This is a great example of how we can make the case for why it's important to invest this time and develop, to continue to develop the capacity, and to make choices about what, what needs to happen on the street in terms of the availability of alternative 911 emergency response. We have one mobile team right now, we have one mobile integrated health team, we have one officer on a mental health that used, team that used to be a co-responder unit. That's not seven-day-a-week alternative response. We have a 24/7 crisis center, and man, that, that facility can do exactly what it was designed to do. But we need to have thoughtful, data-informed conversations and thinking and planning about how we take where we are now and where we go next. But I, I just am really grateful to all of the partners for this work, because we are learning a lot together, but most importantly, this work is saving lives.
So then with the previous slide, have you determined estimated cost savings with the population that you've served at the ED overall?
No, because this number is vastly underestimated.
Okay.
So we don't have the number.
Okay. As you move forward, do you plan on maybe taking a look at what that might look like?
This was done, what, Matt, two weeks ago? We got this, that's where we are here.
Okay, all right. Because I think that would be a great opportunity, right? Because you mentioned earlier, like, what does it look like moving forward, right? For partners, for messaging, messaging, if we have that number, right? So looking at partners, it would be great to then understand with that number who those partners could be. Because if we know the estimated savings at the emergency department, a great partner. Because you, you've stated that LMH has been a great partner thus far, right, with the dashboard for the TRC. But LMH could also be a fantastic partner, because if that number at the ED, that those cost savings, right? Those are their cost savings at the emergency department, so they could be a great partner moving forward. And then if we could also understand if any of the population that's being served, if they are associated with a particular health plan, if we could look at the savings to those health plans, then those health plans could also be fantastic partners, right? But if the overall population that's actually being served, if they are underinsured or completely uninsured, then it would be really interesting to look at that overall population as well, and then to understand if we could actually support that particular population.
Yeah. The cases we've described here are uninsured.
Completely.
And most of, most of the cases are unhoused when they come into this. So that's just so, so far. The other thing I would say is, we do know one thing, the work that's been done in, prior to 2023, we, there's, there was a 27% reduction in the number of people in the midst of the behavioral health crisis who walked into the LMH emergency room before we opened the TRC. And the numbers continue to decline. And the number of state hospital visits at Oswatomi State Hospital also dramatically going down. So we need to take those numbers, those numbers, and we need to multiply them by the number of visits that are... But this is a place where my, Matt could do some drilling down on those particular individuals, so that we could see in real time what the cost savings are if we keep these folks from revisiting. So it's exciting, what's ahead of us is exciting, because it could be really impactful.
Well, the three stories you told, I think, to the general public, would be more meaningful than the data sheet. So we need to somehow get these wins out to the general public somehow.
I completely agree, and there's some things that we're doing on that. It's also important that storytelling, if people recognize who this person is, even if they're not identified, that could be re-traumatizing to a person. It's a very, very delicate needle to thread, and like I said, and that's why we're, right now, we're operating with Fight Club principles. Like, principle number one is, we do not discuss familiar faces. Principle number two, we do not discuss familiar faces, though, but we try to get to the place where, just take the patient, just take the patient. Principle number three, just say yes to this patient. That's a big difference, and we can continue to build till we get to the point where maybe we can make some general storytelling types of things. But we're just starting to understand that.
I guess I, I want to say that I think it's important to note that the work that's happening with this team and all of these partners is incredibly hard work. And everything in their organizational system tells them not to do it. All the rules, all the record-keeping, all the computer systems, all of that make it very easy to say, nope, sorry, can't. So the sheer fact that we've started this and the perseverance of our teams that are working in this space really should be lifted up and recognized, because it has not been easy. And it's, it's, you know, I've said to Bob, I think familiar faces is one of the most transformative things Douglas County's done in the last five years, and I stand by that. But it is really hard, because it's, it takes everyone to come to that table with, with kind of the same approach. It's really easy to say no. Everything's designed for people to say no here, so.
Thank you all for coming. I just don't really have any questions, but I, I would just ask Megan and Brett, as you enter into that familiar faces and you think of your roles as community partners here, how do we weave in to make that so that it, it is less of a, oh, yeah, we could have, and this is the system that we work with, right? So is that a matter of our community partners connecting to my resource connection, so they can make those, and, and there's data and all that? We've done a ton of work over time. I, I am, I immediately go towards, sort of where Commissioner Anderson, I think, was going, like, how, how does this help us be more efficient and more effective? And over time, I've sort of changed my thinking on that. And over time, I've sort of changed my thinking on that to being about being more compassionate and getting the people the services that they need. Maybe there will be cost-effective solutions there that help us, but I, but I think we have to start with the idea of making sure people get what they need and that our, our community partners who are doing such important work here are getting the collaboration that they need so that they can better serve those people who you're interacting with every day. So really grateful for the work and for you coming and sharing your stories today.
And to that, Commissioner, I believe that we can do both with these. I mean, there is, the, this is yes and. We can show the data of how much this is costing our system every time they call a police officer, every time they call an ambulance. We can do that, and we can still be tied into the story of people's lives who are improved. And, and by this very nature of them being a familiar face, these are, these are, these are our people. These are residents, these are our people. And so I, I love it when we can do both, for sure, and we definitely can here.
And combining that, that cost and compassion piece is also about our service providers. I'm just thinking of the, the number of hours that you spent with not having a solution, with, you know, just all those calls coming in to all of your staff people or, you know, the, the, you know, the chaos and trauma of having one person you can't, you know, work within the system there. And instead, gathering those people together, same number of people hours, but working towards a solution. So that's, that's something that interests me a lot.
Any more comments or questions?
I have one last comment. I'll be brief. I appreciate fellow commissioners' comments and feedback, and I also just want to put a point on how I think that one of the, if not the biggest win of the progress on familiar faces in particular, and how I think that in that, in recent years, that has reinvigorated interest and use of My R C, and that that will continue to grow in a positive way. I really feel that. It is a, it's a very tangible, action-based way of taking responsibility and accountability for our collective need to figure out where we're dropping the ball, where messages got missed, where system resistance or, and/or, you know, bans or exiting from services created such a significant barrier that everybody's sort of been avoidant of that person, and they're escalating problems before. So it's a real, I'm just proud of that in this community, especially as somebody who's worked in social services for, you know, more than a dozen years in this community now, that, that is a paradigm shift for systems from different practices and disciplines to be, to be acknowledging that, like, something is off, and we all know this person, or we figured out that enough of us know this person, and maybe all of us have sort of been avoidant in one way or another, or created a barrier that we felt was necessary given that, that moment in time. But it's a new moment in time, and the opportunity to be willing to reassess that and hold each other and ourselves accountable to figuring out how to stop failing folks so much, instead of assuming that folks are failing themselves, which is a paradigm shift that we all struggle with, both personally and professionally, I think. And so I'm just proud of that and grateful to all the partners who have really dug in and been, decided to be a coalition of the willing.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. And we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.